Got a commission back in the end of these all order. We thank you.
Oh, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for decisions from the county and for the county itself. I want to thank you for the country we live in and leading guide us in the directions that makes best for the county and the citizen that lives in it. Amen.
I'm glad our nation stood by the United States of America and clearly we're God and we stand one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming. Here or not here or whatever. Is there anyone that wants to speak? You'll come forward and tell us what your name is, phone number, address, if it's Daniel's please. All right, have enough, we're gonna move along. Go ahead and move.
We have one addition to the agenda at M one deletion under section four, number twenty-one is an addition request board approval of endeavor endeavor convention center site work and deletion under section four, number sixteen, request for discussion of overdue commercial utility account.
First recommendation.
Well, the motion that the agenda be approved with the addition and the deletion.
Six.
What? Fire that way till you get ready.
Well, I'm ready.
All right.
Thank you.
Got a vote moved, motion in a second. All in favor out here? All right.
Okay, we have under recognition, we've got the first is the board adoption of the American Red Cross Month proclamation. The representatives would like to come forward. Do y'all have any words you'd like to say?
Well, one, thank you for doing this. March is Red Cross Month nationally. And right now we're exiting out of the Christmas holiday season where you had an awful lot of unattended cooking and candles causing fires. We're still somewhat in the cooler season and overcrowding causing fires in lower, usually lower income residential homes and overcrowding. So we're still supporting folks who find themselves early in the morning and their possessions have just been burned away. So we're kind of a safety net to help folks out to make sure that they have a place to stay and they get food to eat and clothes to replace what they just lost. So American Red Cross is happy to provide that service and thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you very much. And what I'd like to say to y'all as far as myself is concerned and probably for the board as well, we appreciate anybody that donates their time and does a lot of the things that most other people don't want to do. And we thank each and every one of the individuals as well as the group. We appreciate you coming here.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else want to say?
With that being said, I'll offer a motion that we adopt proclamation that March twenty 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 five be Red Cross Month. And I'd like to echo what the chairman said that we certainly appreciate everything that Red Cross does for our community.
Yeah. Got a motion in a second. And it is good. The board's letting everybody raise your right hand. We thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you do against. Thank you.
We take a quick picture, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all so much.
Thank everyone. Appreciate it. All right, that was the way.
Okay, the next item is a board adoption of National Flood Awareness Week. This is also a proclamation that's attached that is declaring March third through fifth, twenty twenty-five as Florida Flood Awareness Week in Jackson County.
Seven move approval.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Everybody's taking five of ten. With the right hand.
Okay, the next item is request board adoption of resolutions for FDOT grant applications. These are the roads that the board voted on at the previous meeting, just asking for a resolution to be approved.
I'll promote you to approve or to adopt the FDOT resolution and authorize you to sign with the chairman.
I can do that.
I'll second.
Got a motion in a second. Only if dual complete grant application, any other? Right, anybody? Everybody's sitting five are raised in the right hand. Thank you, move along.
Request board approval to set a public hearing for revision to airport regulations ordinance. This is coming at the request of the Tri-County Airport Authority, some updates that need to be added into our ordinance. Asking to set a public hearing for nine AM on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to set a public here for nine AM on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five to change the airport zoning order.
Second, we have a motion in a second. Everybody's taking five of the right hand. Moving on.
Okay, the next item is board approval of a variance from section forty-two dash four ninety-three three B code of ordinance. This is a variance request that was received on twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-four to allow two additional building signs for the racetrack gas station development at forty-eight seventy Magnolia Road. The planning commission recommends approval and so do staff.
Based on staff and approval and on the planning board, we're heading off with a motion to approve.
My second.
A motion in a second to approve. All in favor, raise your right hand. Move along.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda.
Move approval, consent agenda. I move approval.
Second, have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda. Everybody's taking five are raising their hand. Move along.
Okay, the next item is Ms. Mary Carol Murdoch.
Good evening.
Good evening. No doubt, glad to have you.
Thank you. As I come before you each time this year, we're gonna have some taxes that are not gonna be paid. They're gonna be delinquent. And by law, we have to advertise them. And if we do according to what we've done in the past, we rotate between the two newspapers. Last year, the twenty-three taxes were awarded to the Jackson County Times. And if we do what we normally do, we would rotate over to the Graceville News. And that is for you to decide.
That's your recommendation, Ms. Murdoch.
Make a motion, I make a motion to award it to the Graceville News.
Okay, all right, motion. Second, you want?
No, I don't want.
Okay, go ahead.
I've been thinking, you know, in order to be fair that maybe if we did, I would think the recreation laws based upon the population, the number of people who will be affected by that. Graceville's kind of limited to Graceville, is that right?
They get their newspapers out. I know they have a, maybe a limited circulation. I'm not sure how many they give out, but they always take them to the municipalities and leave them for people to come by and pick up. I do know that.
They did it last time. Whenever we did it, they spread them around. I know, you know, that's a fair way to do it. I know Jackson County town right in the center of the county, pretty much. And might do a little bit better job, but it ain't fair. I mean, she worked hard at trying to get them all, or she gets spread around. They may get spread a little better for, you know, little stands here or there. They put it in around the doors and stuff. She does try to do all, get them all in there. I think to be fair, that's, you know, you kind of need to swap it around.
No, I'm not advocating that, that we don't do something business with them, but I'm thinking about the number of people who are affected by it. There will be more. I think that Florida, maybe, excuse me, the times would actually be distributed among more people than just the Graceville, is what I'm saying. So if we looked at it in terms of population, you would award a portion based upon the population. I know with recreation dollars, we do that. We have done that in the past. I would have changed recently in our base upon the population size.
In addition to, of course, newspapers are seeing, you know, a reduced a number of people that look at the newspaper's house or these, are there any other?
At this time, this is about the only way we can advertise it. If we had broadband, that's another thing. We could go to the county's website. There's some things that the county would have to do in order for us to do that, but that would be another option if we had broadband.
Would that be something that we could do on, is there be, you know, work and additional costs to advertise these on the website?
Well, I think the problem is our, enough of our county doesn't qualify for having adequate broadband availability is the problem.
Be able to do that.
And no doubt. There's some discrepancy in the amount of money that we've offered. Some have offered and others have taken it.
We just get bills after we, after you choose, okay.
That's not my question. My question is about who we pay to print and send that stuff.
It's, it's your choices who we choose to.
You do it for one side, then you do it for the other. To make it fair because those are the two, only two newspapers that we have in this county, is that correct?
That's correct.
I understand that.
We, we rotated every year.
It's rotated every year. There used to be three, but we're down to two now.
How long have we done rotating?
As long as I've been here.
As long as I've been here, forty something years.
I think in the, in the future, we may want to look at bidding it out.
That's a possibility.
But I don't know if we have time this year to do that.
Right.
So I, I say continue with your rotation. I, I agree with that, and I think we ought to go ahead and put into effect for the next year to plan on bidding it out.
Say it in the back.
I plan to, you know, go ahead and, and make that as a board decision, go ahead and do that for next year so that we get ahead of the game. Not, you know, not waiting the last minute to make the decision. And that way we can base it on which paper gives us the best, the best rate, and never does it right.
Motion hold.
Motion hold, yeah.
I'd like to add that to the motion if I can.
Yes.
Next year to look at bidding it out. I know we'd have to start earlier than, than that. But we, we need to bid it out, I think.
That, that would be my pleasure.
Okay, I'll make a note to come to you in January then.
Every, how much time you need, you know?
We have to get the newspaper, the list. It's about mid-April. And they have to prepare for it, and it goes out the three, for three weeks in May.
I don't have much time. It's what I say.
There, there are only two options, and they really would be submitting quote. Generally, they charge what, per line?
Per line.
Yes, they're just gonna be quoting you a few of the I don't even know that you have to go through a formal bid process on this one.
Doc Spire, if you want to flow.
Well, I was just want to say that this makes certain that they are able to distribute the, the papers to small municipalities that may be forty miles away from the center town.
Would you like to add that to the motion as well?
I would.
Okay.
Well, they, they did the last time.
Yeah.
That, that was, did, I know personally they carried papers over all, all the smites and all, spread it around.
And you would know if they did or didn't do that, so.
Yeah. And they dropped them off at our office for people to stop by and pick up.
We have someone we depend on.
Motion filled down.
Motion, we got two amendments to the motion.
Can we add the, the bidding process?
They can have a bid, bid.
Oh, yeah?
I second it.
Got all that. All right.
Right.
That's a pleasure to the board, I suppose. Got it, you know.
I'll see you about this in January twenty-sixth.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And it would be a pleasure to have it at that time, where we can move on. All right, move on.
Request board approval of an MOA with U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement. This is an agreement for staff to be trained in the execution of immigration warrants in the place of ICE upon their availability. This is a new law that requires jails to participate in the two eighty-seven G program ordered by Governor DeSantis.
That was all, just a question there. That came out of the special session.
Yes.
And so he signed that into law, I'm thinking.
Yes, sir.
Will there be any additional cost to the county?
Uh, the cost will be covered.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Crutchfield, second by Mr. Don Pro. All in favor, raise that hand. All right, move along.
Request board approval of the summer work program policy. The board approved this special project during budget sessions to create a mechanism for local high school students aged sixteen to eighteen to introduce students to job opportunities within the county and provide a chance to learn about the inner workings of local government. This program will also aid in the recruitment efforts for the departments outlined in the policy.
This is a good program. I'll offer a motion to approve the summer work program.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the summer work program. All in favor, raise that right hand.
Yeah, we had this ask. You give me a little more description of what the summer work program.
Sure, so this will offer four part-time positions, up to four part-time positions that will work a max of thirty hours per week, and these will be specifically concentrated in outdoor field operation type departments, parks and recreation, utilities, recycling, maintenance, and road and bridge. And so the idea is more to expose high school students to what's available who may, you know, not go to college or may just want to get right into the workforce. It's in hopes that we gain some, some traction from local students to come join us after they graduate.
The city of Brandon has had a program similar to this for several years now. It's been very successful and gives young, young children, young adults opportunity to earn some extra money during the summer.
What's the duration for the program?
Um, it would just be during the summer months when they're like out for the summer, but I think we probably would start it maybe that first week in June. Is that what you're thinking?
Get into August, but, thank you.
Anybody want to talk? Think we already voted on that, so I guess we'll move along. He didn't.
I don't think, I don't think we voted, do we?
We tried to.
Yeah, yeah, I, I interrupted you all there.
We voted, we just didn't bring your will. All right, if you want to vote again, you feel better to vote again.
I'm in favor of it.
No, okay.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
One second, yes, sir.
Before we move on, I, I need to ask the question about the prior thing, if I could, to Chief Jeter. How many people are you gonna send to that?
Uh, right now I got four that I sent the names in designated for it. That's my classification department.
Are you gonna have somebody on duty all the time that can do that?
So they'll handle the stuff. It may be incidents where, because when we execute the warrants is whenever the inmates released from jail when they finished their jail sentence, so there may be.
Well, everybody stays to the next morning anyway, right?
Right, so when we execute the warrants, so just before forty-eight hour period for immigration to pick them up, and this is on, when they're not available to do so. So there may be incidents, maybe a weekend or something, one of them may come up there and issue the warrant. And then they'll go. It's gotta be done at the time of their release.
I didn't want us to get in them.
Yes, sir, they're, they're gonna do centralized locations for areas, so we'll send ours and it's statewide, so.
Trading in Tallahassee, generally?
I'm not sure if they're going to Tallahassee, where I assume it would be Tallahassee.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm starting, I'm through, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Anything else, anybody? All right, move along, please, now.
The next item is board discussion of the one cent tax ordinance. So the current one cent sales tax ordinance sunsets on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. By ordinance proceeds for this tax revenue must be deposited into transportation trust for operating road and bridge department. These proceeds fund a significant portion, approximately fifty percent of the transportation trust fund. In order to renew this ordinance, the board will need to determine if the funds for the new ordinance should continue to go into transportation trust or in general revenue. In the current budget year twenty-four twenty-five, the county is projected to receive approximately five point eight million dollars from the one cent tax. In addition to this amount, the transportation trust fund is subsidized by general revenue by five point eight million. If there is a modification that no longer restricts these funds to transportation trusts, the county will be required to have a performance audit completed before the new ordinance takes effect. So we're looking for board discussion, but I'll just tell you staff's recommendation is to leave it as is. If some point in the future, we are more, if we're not needing that kind of money from this one cent sales tax for road and bridge, that could be addressed at that time. But I don't see that coming anytime soon with it having so much. But you may have additional comments on that.
No, that pretty much is it.
This is an old tax. I mean, it's been in effect for you.
And so whenever this one sunset.
Already set.
That's right.
Okay, good. I was gonna hold my nose. I just wanted to know for sure.
Historically, it's funded roughly about fifty percent of the operations and the maintenance of the road and bridge. If this really come, we can't not do it.
So one thing I did want to mention, of course, we'll need to set up a public hearing to adopt this, but in the past, when this ordinance has been adopted, there's been a sunset provision. That's what we're dealing with now. One of the things that we are seeing every session now is the legislature wanting to make any kind of tax implementation through referendum. So it's my recommendation that you do not put a sunset provision on this tax going forward. Because.
Your recommendation for what?
That you, that you don't include a, a sunset provision, like this one we're having to deal with because what was it, fifteen years ago, that board put a sunset provision.
We could, we could always terminate the tax at, at any time.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, if we got to a point that we decided that we no longer were, was no longer necessary to, to have this sales tax, we could at that time terminate it.
Correct.
So and not having a sunset provision in there, that puts us at risk of having to have it done by referendum.
Yes, there have been a number of taxes that we ordinarily have been able to adopt by ordinance that now have to be approved by referendum, and I know that's expensive and difficult to get passed.
And that was your description of it to start with, one and then Dan. All right.
So we.
All right, I made a vote for a tax. I haven't played any of them.
Can you do it now or during budget?
Okay.
When, when do we want to have the public hearing? Are we talking about them?
Well, this sunsets in December, so, I mean, really anytime before then, but we can go ahead and do it. Or we can wait till closer to budget, whatever the.
Maybe schedule when we had another, here at the same time.
We've got a public hearing already set for when?
March eleventh, but I don't know that that would be enough time to draft everything and advertise it.
Yeah, advertising would be the issue. I, I drafted the ordinance last year.
First meeting in April.
That'd be fun.
Offer motion, we set a public hearing to address this at first, at a regular meeting in April, whichever date that is, for now, I thought maybe.
Okay.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. All right.
We have to, we have to do a public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Everybody in favor?
Eight.
Everybody in favor, taking five of ten, huh? All opposed? All right. Move along.
Okay, so board approval to enter into negotiations regarding education reimbursement contract. So pursuant to board policy, the board paid monies toward the cost of tuition and an additional stipend for Mr. Wesley Wiggins to attend paramedic school at Shippola College. I won't read all of this, these synopses is, he has decided to take employment elsewhere. Therefore, he owes the county nine thousand thirty-three dollars because he didn't fulfill the thirty-six month commitment. And so we're asking for the board to approve a payment plan, which would be over an eighteen month period in the amount of five hundred and one dollars and eighty-three cents per month.
Is, has there been precedent set for this type of arrangement?
Uh, I don't know that this particular thing has come up, but, I mean, I, I think it's a good solution. Certainly can't hold anybody here, and it's, he, so the payment is a good solution, in my opinion.
And in the past, when we have had employees who have not completed their term, we haven't had any success in collecting those funds.
So what is the repercussions if they don't follow through with their?
Right now, there are none, and the current agreement is not one that I've prepared.
And by, by spreading it out over a longer period of time, we feel like we might be more better getting the dollars back, you know?
I think if you, yes, if you have an employee that's offering.
That's the ideal, huh, that?
Yeah, correct.
And you prepare one that will?
Yes, and that, that's part of the agenda request is for y'all to direct me to, to revise that, the agreement going forward.
He agreed with the, he's agreed with the, he's in a case.
Yes, the employee's offering what he's able to pay. I would, I would work with the employee on, you know. I think that's your best opportunity based on the terms of the agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Motion?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Who did that, now, this is eight months, did you say?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months, okay.
Okay.
All right, move along.
Request board approval of TDC videography contract with John Staret Photography. Uh, this is the amount of five thousand dollars and was approved by the, by the TDC board.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, I hear it second. Got a second from Mr. Crutchfield. Motion from Mr. Don Pro, all in favor?
Okay, this is a request.
I was gonna take a larger pitch.
This is a request for board approval of rural infrastructure fund grant agreement D zero three zero zero for rehabilitation of Barber Road Lift Station. The award amount is one million six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And again, this is just to approve the grant agreement.
Second.
Got him.
You make a motion.
Motion in a second. Motion Dr. Spire with second, Mr. Crutchfield. All in favor? Move along.
Okay, the next item is board approval of a lease agreement with Partners for Pets Incorporated. At the direction of the board at the last meeting, this agreement has been revised to add a provision if the county needed to buy them out of that facility. And so if the board is satisfied with the attached, we recommend approval.
Did we not, did we not talk about that about a month ago?
Yes, sir.
What did we decide then? I forgot.
Table it.
Tabled it to make some revisions, and those revisions have been added.
See, it's better, we don't have to vote.
I make the motion to approve.
Got a motion, go.
Second.
Second by Mr. Don Pro, all in favor for the Partners for Pets, right behind. Move along.
This is a board approval, request board approval of a lease renewal with the Chamber of Commerce at the Russ House. This is the first renewal available under the agreement for one year from March first twenty-five to February twenty-eighth, twenty-sixth.
Basically, we're gonna get through, bet your money on that bill?
Probably not.
I agree with you.
So move it, Chairman, Tom, Tom.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion in a second. Everybody approve spending money on Russ House and let them have their lease.
Okay.
Let us get it out.
Next item is recourse board, request board approval of extension of physician services agreement for the jail. Current agreement that expired two twenty-six twenty-five. The procurement process will need a little more time than that, so we're just asking for a thirty-day extension. And then you all will be seeing the procurement process for possibly the same person, but a new contract for that physician.
Board administrative recommendations, want the pleasure to vote.
We will prove.
Doc Spire moves to prove it. Second, I have a second, Mr. Crutchfield. Everybody in favor, raise the hand unless you have some discussion. Move along.
Okay, this is a request board approval of master services agreement and engagement letter with Car Riggs and Ingram for auditing services. Uh, this is an amount of a hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars, and this is a budgeted item.
Motion to approve the, approve the agreement. Motion to approve the, approve the agreement.
I have a motion, but Donna Pro, second by Dr. Sires.
I saw that the staff is very happy with the services that we're getting, the audits and able to work very good with our.
As far as I know, finance and our staff are satisfied.
My only concern is the fee.
Say it again.
My concern was the fee. So, they're putting you under a master services agreement and there's, there are some issues with the master services agreement. This is, this goes beyond the general letter of engagement that you typically get every year. I see there was the term that was supposed to have been changed in here that didn't get changed as far as venue, but the fee did go up substantially and they do good work, but there are other firms around here that also do good work. I would just give that, give them.
I'm familiar with the car rig there.
I know they, there's, there's a lot of benefits of continuing to work with the same firm year after year.
Agreed.
Of course, that's gotta be weighed against the increases as well, but I know prices for everything has gone up, they're saying the same things that we are, but I still would prefer to stay with them on, and then if it continues to go up, we may want to look at putting it out at some point in the future. And we're at risk of the change that was not made?
Yeah, the chairman doesn't need to sign until they've moved venue to Jackson County. This was supposed to have been changed.
I made my motion to include that change.
All in favor, Car Rigs and Ingram, right? And move along.
Okay, this is a request for board approval to award twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero five generator engineering of critical facilities. Recommending based on the packet to award this RFQ to David H. Melvin Engineering.
Offer a motion to approve the staff recommendation. Second.
A motion in a second to approve the staff recommendation. All in favor?
Request board approval to award twenty-four, twenty-five dash zero six generator engineering of lift station for HMGP, also to DHM.
Not familiar with the Y K H company, are they, they're.
Not either.
Are they from somebody that we're familiar with at all? Offer motion to approve the, with DHM.
I have a motion in a second to approve for DHM. The local engineer. Everybody in approval here raise your hand. You want to approve our, that's great, yeah, okay, you know.
Okay, the next item. It's a request board directional garbage collection RFP. Our staff is requesting board directional whether the board wishes to continue in the current waste management contract or release a request for proposals for these services. We are currently under contract with Waste Management until twelve thirty-one twenty-five with an optional five-year renewal available.
Question. How long to be offensive with bid?
I'm not aware of it being bid.
It needs to be.
I'm kind of in favor of the bidding as well.
Yes, sir.
I've not received any complaints about the service being provided, but I think, you know, it probably is time to take a look at it and consider weigh that against, you know, the ramifications of changing companies, you know.
All five of us, I feel like darkness too. I don't know about anybody. All right.
Do you make the motion? I will make a motion that we direct staff to release an RFP, a request for proposal for waste management services for solid waste services for the county. What would the timeline be?
Well, normally, they're a little more straightforward, so with something like this, I would likely actually bring the specifications back to the board to make sure, because there are a lot of variables. And so, to make sure, I have a kind of a running list of things we'd like to see in the RFP already, but we'd want to know that we captured what you all are looking for.
So, when we're asking for a bid, are we asking for basically unit or a cost for residential service, cost for commercial, all of that, a laundry list of different services that they'll provide?
Yes, and it can get complicated quick on what all you're looking at. So, I mean, you know, I'm thinking in the next month or so, we might could have that back for y'all, but we don't want to wait. We want to go ahead with this so that we can have plenty of time to.
That's a good recommendation.
I'll offer a motion that we direct staff to go ahead and begin putting together an RFQ for garbage services in the county.
I think. Motion in a second. On the garbage proposal. All in favor, raise a hand on the right side. Move along. Have we got anyone in the audience from either or all the one that owned it or does that or someone to bid? I think I see a gentleman back there. Would you like to speak a couple of minutes? Come forward, please, sir. And I'll get you next, just a minute.
Yes, sir, you have, Flo.
Good evening. My name is Boyd Childery. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Waste Pro. We operate in and around Jackson County and have done so for many years. We have contracts that have gone out to bid over the last several years that I've been involved in this area, most recently over in Walton County. We're not asking for anything other than an opportunity to serve the public. Waste Management, as you all had said, has done a good job, but over the years of owning a contract, prices go up, things change, and RFP is just a good opportunity for the residents to see what else is out there. And we just hope to, to be one of those people that bid on it. We're just looking forward to it. I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you. But you have a question?
No.
Anybody have a question? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, too.
I'm right on it. All right, you got it.
Commissioners Doug Rayner, Waste Management Staff, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak for just a minute. Was made aware that you guys were looking at this very recently, certainly understand the, the thought about going out and taking a look. I liken this to your conversation about Car Rigs and Ingram you had just a minute ago, about how, you know, you like them, you know them, and that's what we've done here in Jackson County for a very long time. And we appreciate the service that we've, or the opportunity to do that here, and we'll continue to do that. If you do move forward with this, which obviously you've already voted before we spoke, but if you decide to move forward with an RFP, we will absolutely take part in that. Our operations director for this area is here. He's served this area for a long time, too. We have a lot of friends in this county. And we just, again, really appreciate your, your thought and, and look forward to continuing to serve the community. If you ever have any questions, we would appreciate a call and we could work that out. Again, I think our service is exemplary and that's to Bill's credit, what he's done in this county for a long time, and we'll continue to do that. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'm sure any commissioner here will welcome you to call individually.
So, I've talked to Doug before and he's, as I said, I've not had any complaints with Waste Management Service or otherwise. I just think it, over a period of time, if you want to take a look at things and make sure that everything is in line.
Anybody that wants to say something? Dr. Sires. I don't think, okay. I got that, have him go ahead.
Okay, this is a request board approval of guidelines for distributing fill materials. As you all know, from time to time, cities or the school board ask the board for approval for a load or two loads or five loads of dirt, and those all come to the board. And so, we are proposing that the board give a blanket approval up, up to ten loads of fill material without the board's, like a front-end approval that we'll keep up internally. And if they need beyond the ten loads, then that would come to the board for approval.
Is that to anybody or?
Cities and the school board.
Okay, yeah.
Did we skip one now on the?
Oh, number sixteen. Yeah, number sixteen is deleted.
Got deleted. It was deleted.
Okay. Okay.
So, let me see, I may have missed that, but your staff recommendation is for this point going forward, if either the school board or any of the municipalities request assistance in obtaining field dirt up to ten loads, you can, we can approve that without having to come to the board.
Per year.
Per year.
Yeah. Just to expedite that.
That's fine, given from direct, and that was a good recommendation.
Offer motion to go along with staff's recommendation to give ten loads of dirt to school board and municipalities per year without having to seek approval with this commission. Does that happen very often? The request?
All the time, and what we found is there's no uniform way or policy. So, my recommendation was to just decide how we're going to handle it from now on and then each municipality. So, right now, I've got two pending, Greenwood and Malone, both requesting some. Grand Ridge's got some last year, school, I mean, it is pretty frequent, but this keeps us from having to come back asking for a load or two of dirt. Many cases, we haul it for the municipality. The school board does have that capability to haul themselves, but this will help get the material to the towns a lot quicker.
And we can keep up, again, keep up with it. So, if Grand Ridge gets three loads in May and then they come back and ask for another six loads in, in June, we'll know that they're down to getting one load. We can keep up with that fairly easily.
That's right. My intent is to run it with a calendar year since we are so early in the year rather than a fiscal year.
My second. Motion in a second, approved, given to municipalities and the school board. Dirt, did I, did I name them all?
Ten loads per year.
Dirt. Everybody raise your hand. All right. Move along.
Okay, this is a request for board approval to pay off the balance of the Malone Fire Rescue Trailer. The town of Malone is requesting assistance in paying off the remainder of the balance owed on the Malone Fire Rescue Trailer. The staff's recommendation that we pay off the remaining balance of the trailer in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-one cents. This amount would come from excess fees.
What, there a little more behind that that you explained to me?
Sure, yes.
Would you like to explain that to the rest of the board?
Yes, so this was well-intentioned to place a fire rescue, an ambulance in Malone several years ago. Unfortunately, we have never identified a source of funding to fully staff that ambulance. And so, while we did make it work for a few years with CARES funding, that funding ran out. And now, we are at a place where really Malone is in a, not a great spot because they're making payments on something that's not even able to be utilized on a routine basis.
You'd say that was a bad decision when it happened?
It was not the best decision, yes, sir.
Oh, so what will happen, once we pay that off, are they still on the trailer? Basically, we're still.
Yes, they'll own it and then they'd like to auction it off.
So, they'll auction it off.
Don't stretch yourself out too far.
So, it was our suggestion that they do this? Or was it?
Well, the board at that time approved to relocate an ambulance to Malone.
If they would buy.
If they would buy the trailer. Well, the problem is Marianna has over seventy percent of the call volume, so to move an ambulance out of Marianna is just not really even realistic. So, we utilized the CARES funding to staff a sixth ambulance while that lasted. That, that has come and gone, and so, we do not have the ability to fund a sixth ambulance right now.
And the, the cost of the town of Malone is incurred towards purchasing this trailer is what roughly?
I think they, I think the quote that I heard was around fifty thousand dollars for the mobile home.
So, they've only paid thirty something.
Yeah, so they like just to, us to pay the balance and then let them auction off to try to get some of their money back. And I think it's a fair, a fair deal.
We suggested they do it.
There's a recommendation.
I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion, Dr. Kurt Field. Second by Dr. Grant. All in favor, raise your hand. We're going to sell the truck.
Okay.
Better than all.
This is board direction regarding opioid settlement funding. So, you all have a memo at your table. It says a lot on it describing all the different sources, but in short, what we'd like to propose is that we split opioid funds with the share of fifty percent. And so, how we'd like that to look is when we get a payment, if we get ten thousand dollars, we send five thousand to the sheriff's office. If we get twenty, we send ten. But we do it as we receive the payments because everything we have right now are all projections, of course. So, we would spend those as we receive them. The sheriff suggested that they provide a spending plan on how they'll spend the funds, which is, is perfectly fine. And then they will do their own reporting on what they spend to the Northwest Florida Health Network.
Questions for you?
Sure.
Now, are we going to have everybody that we get some of that money, that all going to have a spending plan?
We already do.
Okay, well. I misunderstood you then. I guess I didn't pay attention.
So, that was the memorandum of understanding.
I know that they already had part of that spent, so I didn't understand that completely.
Yeah, well, you are talking, you are correct about the MOU, but we're not suggesting the MOU. We're suggesting a spending plan, which is, that, that's what we were required to do. And so, we're, he has suggested he provide us a spending plan.
So, will it be an uneven split or will it be an even split?
Even split.
But we've not, we've not.
What I remember is.
We've not seen that spending plan from the sheriff as of yet.
Not yet, he, but, so he will provide that, and then as the funds come in, we'll, we will.
Get in the cart before the horse, you really, maybe see that spending plan before we agree to this, or?
Well, that's up to the commission.
I think it'd be worthwhile to see that spending plan from the sheriff before we know.
Or, or any of the other people that have spent.
So, we, so the Fire Rescue did do a spending plan. That, that has been done.
So, we have that.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I assume that the sheriff has got some idea how he plans to spend these dollars once he gets them.
I'm sure he does.
We voted to spend, we bought three cars the other day, one of our previous meetings.
That's not, that's, those funds have already been.
Yeah, so that'll be part of his fifty percent for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Well, he may not know what he's going to do with it yet. There may be things that he wants to do that this won't pay for.
Well, if he does, it's been a plan. If you don't get enough money, if you get hype of it, the money, then you kind of know where it was going in a sense, but he putting, if he does a spending plan, he then projects something he don't have.
I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the sheriff, but I think he would be open, based on my conversation, to providing the spending plan before we start sending the fifty percent. I, I didn't, I don't think he was trying to give us that afterward, so he's, he's the one that suggested the spending plan, so.
If that's an intent, what are you going to use it for?
Yeah, I think that would, I mean, again, I'm not conceptually opposed to doing this. I think it's a, I'm sure he's got the, the need for these dollars and will be able to adequately be able to spend these towards, you know, opioid problem in some manner. But I think it'd be, it'd be nice to see with those, how he plans to use these dollars before he agree to it.
Well, I myself would be welcome to use any dollars where it free up something that where you give us more protection in this county. And then we got a wide diverse county, so. But don't condemn the sheriff until he needs to condemn it, you know.
I'm not condemning the sheriff.
Well, I'm not accusing you of condemning him. I'm just telling you, we, we shaped it all and we sat here and talked, Commissioner. We sat here and checked every bit of that one way. So, I want it to be fair, and that's the only way I know to do, is to bring that out and bring it up and make it fair.
I think I understand what you're saying. You're, I mean, you want to see how anyone wants to spend the money before.
Well, I'm, I'm just as happy with you, what you said as I, as you are. What I'm going to do is I do not want to divide it up unevenly.
No, no, fifty-fifty.
Just like me, you robbed a bank. I reckon we need to split it up evenly.
Fifty-fifty is, I don't plan on robbing anybody.
No, I don't either, but I, but I bet everybody listened when I said that.
Yeah, I, I, conceptually, I think it's a good idea to split these funds fifty-fifty, I just want to agree to it. Let's, let's ask, you know, get him to give us an idea of how he plans to spend these in addition to the vote.
And all the rest of them, wait.
When you say all the rest of them?
Okay, I mean, anybody that's spending from those opioid funds. If you wanna have him, then you don't have to divide it up. But if you do have him, let them all present, like you said, somebody that already presented. How long ago did they present that?
So the spending plan had to be submitted, I guess about a year ago to, so that, the spending plan is a requirement from the Northwest Florida Health Network.
That's okay.
Which we put together and was approved. And so what he would be putting together is his own spending plan for his fifty percent of the money.
And again, I, I'm sure he has an, an idea of how he would like to spend these, he's already, uh, requested dollars for the free vehicles, and I'm sure he's got other needs as well. We'd just like to know what they are.
Well, he probably needs to know how much he's got to spend as well.
So he's, the, the, I will say, everything's gonna be based on projections because it's all estimates until it comes, we don't even know what we're getting, but I believe.
Hundred and eleven thousand, two eighty-four, right?
There's an additional, is it an additional hundred and fourteen that will go to him beyond the ninety-nine this year?
That's correct, hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and eight, but that is a projected number, not the actual number.
Yeah, so he's already received the ninety-nine, three eighty, thirty-four for the vehicles. He'll get a projected additional hundred and fourteen, four oh eight, four seventy-nine this year.
We split fifty-fifty.
Correct.
Based on the projections.
Do we have to send in where money come from, the grant, we have to send in?
We have to do reporting, uh, which is another thing that, and I talked with him about them doing their own reporting just because they, they would have their info, they would have their proof of, you know, I don't even know what's all included in the reporting, but you have to provide evidence of what you're spending on.
When, when you get those from each person, would you mail a copy to me or send me a copy or just see and I'll get them, okay?
Yeah, be that too.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have no choice, and you know, you got half of the money. If we got all the money, we'd have to do it for a report, but we gotta do half of it, for half of it, he had to do the other half for his half.
Right, and I think he's completely agreeable to that.
Well, I'll, I'll.
If I give him some money, I'm gonna tell you how to spend it.
Mr. Chairman, all of this is a way of a motion, uh, all of a motion that we split, uh, any future opioid funds that come into the county, fifty-fifty with the sheriff, contingent upon him providing a spending plan as to how he intends to spend those dollars.
That's a very good motion.
Can I just clarify that, um, it is the future, but we're, we are proposing that he get fifty percent of everything received this fiscal year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Unless you got more than two recipients.
It's just you, it would just be the board accounting commissioners.
Cheat them.
And the sheriff.
I like the ballgame, but I wanna hear him sing once in a while, too.
That's accurate.
Got a motion in a second to approve the opioid money one more time.
Let, let me, let me get this straight. You gonna split future, uh, splits future money or money that's on hand now?
Both.
That is satisfactory, right?
And if the board is agreeable to it, we can just send his spending plan through the same mechanism we sent ours, which through the Northwest Florida Health Network. And if they approve it, if y'all are okay with that, then we'll consider it good.
All right, I had a motion in a second, motion by Mr. Donna Froden. Second by Mr. Chris Hill, everybody sixty-five, say it out, raise your hand, move along.
Okay, board, a ratification of appointment of member to new market tax credit board. Um, so we need Commissioner Westbrook to be this appointment because the bylaw state, the chairman will be, um, this appointment.
That was a fine meeting, I spent about three minutes.
Chicken motion to approve.
I'm second.
Got a motion in a second, make me the new market man. All in favor, raise your hand.
Okay.
I want anything else he wanna write.
I got one last item.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that.
And I do have one thing in roundtable, see, I don't run off, um, we've got Mr.
I thought we looked at the agenda before now.
Yeah, we got Mr. Brent Melvin, uh, here to explain this last item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board, uh, appreciate y'all being here tonight, um.
Thank you.
Coming to talk to you about the Endeavor Convention Center and to give you a little background, uh, originally when the project went out for bid and included doing the building renovations, as well as the parking lots and the sidewalks and all those items, uh, that were in there. When we received the bids, initially they were higher, so we did some value engineering and awarded just the building renovation itself to the current contractor who is CGM, they're the building contractor. Uh, so, yes, sir, so.
Oh, Cawfords. Did you ask where, from where they're from?
Where?
From Cawfords, Georgia.
Okay.
Cawfords, yes, sir, so they've been working on the, the project and they're currently, excuse me, if I can put you on the spot, Mr. Donna Froden, they're probably about eighty-five percent complete with the building renovations, so they're getting close to being done with that. The site work that was deducted in the original bid was about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, that was to do the parking lot, the sidewalks, all of those items. Uh, and so those were taken out of the, the current contract that's with, uh, CGM. We've actually done, uh, part of that work, uh, with the city of Marianna under some of their grant funds for the water and sewer to the project, so the, the city of Marianna, uh, has ended up actually contributing about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars running water and sewer to that facility.
Tell them, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir, so they've been putting a lot in there. Uh, so now what we're doing is wanting to come back to the board and looking at the options that we have to be able to finish the site work so that we've got a parking lot that people can park in and, uh, and go to events in the center, as I hear they wanna open, uh, May fourteenth is, is their grand opening. So I, I've got a handout that I've given each one of you, and this would probably be a little easier to describe. And naturally, some of this has changed in the interim since we printed it, but I'll, I'll go over that. So what I've got showing there is four current areas. And there's kind of the paving that's right there in front of the building where the new awning is coming out to Governor Scott Boulevard. Um, and, and we've, we've got to pave that, so that's, that's part of what we would like to go ahead and move forward with. The other options are parking lots that are on the north and south sides, uh, and then also looking at some grass parking options that are there as well. Uh, and so you can sort of see those and, and what, in the letter I broke it down to was the different options that were there. I'm gonna go ahead and jump to the end, what we would like to request, though, is in looking at the site contract that was originally provided, it's a little expensive and doesn't include some critical items like lighting and other things that we really need for the project. So what we would like to do is request, uh, for the board to allow us to move forward with a not to exceed amount of four hundred thousand dollars, and I'll explain a little bit about that, to move forward with paving the front area of the parking and then looking at the parking on each side of the building, as well as, there's actually some existing areas that are up the hill that would serve both the convention center and future development in the area. Where the four hundred thousand dollars is coming from is the remaining money that is in the TDC's lockbox. So that original amount that was dedicated twenty-five years ago that's been accumulating, we've got a little bit of money that is left over in there, and then we're actually looking at, uh, again, going back to the opioid discussion, what the projections are through the rest of the year of what's gonna be collected in there. And so, uh, in working with staff, uh, and with Rhett on bidding out the individual components of this project, we feel like we can get a lot more done for less money than what the current contract is.
And, and, so, so Grant, just to, to kind of add to what you said.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as opposed to doing this change, are we doing the change order to the con, we're not doing a change order to the contract, because we're not gonna have CGM do this work, correct?
Correct, yes, sir, so we're, this isn't actually proposing any current change orders, what we would like the board's direction on and our, our request would be that the board approve us to work with Rhett and with staff to move forward on completing the site work. But obviously, you wanna know how much is gonna be spent, and of course, again, this money is coming from the current TDC funds, and then just to be clear, there's, i- it does include, uh, projecting out future TDC funds through the end of the year, uh, basically, uh, that are there. But we'll work with staff to get the earthwork done, there's some dirt that needs to be removed from the north side, doing the paving and doing those items individually, uh, in order to get it more in budget and have, have less costs to come out of the TDC's.
And by doing it this way, as opposed to doing it at change order through CGM, we did it through CGM's contract, there would be basically general conditions, and the amount of about thirty-five thousand dollars on top of this cost that we'd have to pay CGM, so by, by doing it this way, we're, we're actually saving the county quite a bit of money.
Yes, sir, we, we can work directly with the subs that we're used to, uh, to working with.
Mr. Dan.
This proposal also includes road and bridge performing some services for grave work that we should cut down significantly on, on area number two.
Doc, all right. Has this board previously made, excuse me, made the approval to take those funds from the CGM?
Yes, sir.
When was that done?
Um, I guess a couple of years ago now, um, so that's where the majority of the funding for the convention center is coming from. And while I'm, I'm speaking, I did just wanna say that four hundred may be an okay number, staff feels like three hundred and fifty thousand is a more conservative number because we are basing it on projections. Um, it could be four hundred, but, you know, we've, it's hard to say, so we just wanna be fully transparent that we are, we're working with projections on these numbers.
And it also. It also needs to be noted that out of these costs, about one point five million, obviously the legislative appropriation that the county
Correct.
Been able to get, uh, to go towards this project as well, so.
Yes, sir.
And, and we're kind of to that point that we, we, the, the work that's being done at the building, we're gonna have a very nice facility. But without these parking improvements, all of these things being done, that building is actually useless.
I agree with you. It, 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 it would somehow money comes from like bed and tax, this, that, but.
Okay.
Yes, sir, so that, yeah, as, as Ms. Daniel said, that's, it was coming from, there was a legislative appropriation that, that added on to roughly two million dollars that was, that the county had put in the lockbox that was specifically designated from the bed taxes that go to TDC to go into that fund, and that's.
For a convention.
Right, yes, sir, and the projections of those remaining four hundred thousand, we're hopeful it'll be three hundred and fifty thousand, but.
Keep it locked, that's, uh.
Well, well, Rhett will beat us down, we'll, we'll get it in there, and, uh, but anyhow, that's where that, that money would come from, but again, as, as Mr. Daniels pointed out, you know, part of that is based on the projections through the end, the end of the year.
Basically, part of mine is, is this, this entire facility is gonna be paid for by using tourist development tax, which is by far and large coming from other people, other, other than local taxpayers and by the legislative appropriations, so that's, that's important to keep in mind.
And then state appropriate won't run out, will it? They got all the money to work.
What's it already left in that, in that account?
Well, the current balance, it, once everything is paid out, is in the, in the lockbox fund. What would be the balance today of the lockbox?
So today it's around two point one one.
No, I'm, but I mean.
Actually.
When this project is completed.
Uh, once this project is complete, there'll be projected, um, around two hundred, a little over two hundred thousand plus, and so that is, y'all, um, said that the operation or maintenance and stuff for the convention center will come for that, so that's why we're also anticipating a lower, or we're more comfortable with the lower around, so that the operation and maintenance of the convention center will come here.
Yeah, I think the chamber, I think the change center, is, is it in lieu of the original proposal for a convention center?
This is, yes, this will, instead of building a new convention center, this will be the convention center.
Yeah, that might have provoked for that, I make a motion to approve it. Got a motion to approve? Did I hear it said?
I, I cannot.
You can't do it, I know you can't, but you can do that, I second. Give it back. I'll say.
Yeah, I, I got a question.
Yeah, the whole knows, but I'm gonna do it.
Oh, that will pave parking area three, two.
Yes, sir, and I guess I'll clarify on the map, so what we're looking at is doing areas one, two, and three. And, uh, today, in discussing with, with staff and, and with, with Kelsey as well, there's still the option there for the, the, the grass field where the old ball field was at. Uh, but in reality, and I apologize, I didn't have a chance to print it out, but if you're back on the left side of the map, kind of up the hill a little ways, where some of the old buildings were demolished, it's actually a pretty good level parking lot that's up the hill. And so rather than making improvements, uh, there to the grass field, that may be something else, we'd rather look at that area, uh, as overflow parking, if you will. So I guess to clarify, Mr. Branch, the, the paved parking would be those right there around the convention center, but then, uh, making the necessary improvements, whether it's adding some buildings here, doing a little bit of striping or whatnot up the hill so that that would be an overflow, uh, area, uh, for the additional parking, cause you know, just to go back, you, you know, you've got roughly a twenty thousand square foot facility, um, maximum occupancy of six hundred and sixty-three, you know, to Mr. Spire's point, um, with the two million dollars that was in the lockbox at the time this contract was awarded, uh, there's no way you'd ever be able to build a facility like that, um, unfortunately, we were uh, lucky with a lot of hard work from Mr. Donna Froden, uh, I'll give some credit to my dad, I guess, on, on, you know, spearheading a lot of that, uh, along with, with staff and everyone else to be able to get that done, so. At the end of the day, it'll have those two parking areas that will be, uh, right there next to it, and then we'll have some overflow parking up the hill.
Yeah, we, thank you all your drainage.
Yes, sir. Yep, yeah, yeah, part of that was running some new drainage with Governor Scott Boulevard, um, and some other upgrades that were there. And then.
And relative to the, where the old baseball field used to be, if we're able to convert that into a, a grass parking, the, the county road and bridge department will be able to make the, the connection and provide the closure to make that accessible from the, I'm gonna call it, I would call it the west parking lot, the one that's closest to the, to the highway.
Right, yes, sir.
I'll be sure you get a permit for that.
Yep, yeah, we're looking at, and yeah, that was really for the overflow parking, looking at what the best options there were, but definitely need that paved parking.
This is a question from, based from curiosity, okay, um, not attacking you personally, but if there, if there are issues come to the college with, with you, with, uh, security services, I have to stay in for a vote because I've employed by the college. So I guess I've been wondering, Mr. Donna Froden, how are you getting away with the conflict of interest?
I, well, I'll answer that question, we were engaged prior to me becoming a county commissioner. If that's what you're asking.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, well, we, we were engaged prior to me even running for county commissioner, that's how long ago this project been in the planning stages, is that what you're asking?
Yes, that's exactly what I see.
And then from this point forward, I have been, I've had to recuse myself from any votes on any of this.
And I, and I would attest that the last three or four months, and.
Yeah, I remember once last week, you, you can recuse yourself because of a possible conflict of interest, but I think the clause also states that you must state why. But no, that's at the point of the motion. So in the future, I think we all say why, I said that would I have to, would I have to not vote on the issue and deal with the college, I said, because I've employed by the college.
I see.
You're curious.
All right.
Yes, sir. Good question.
That, that is by your question.
You said it's by my question, yes.
All right, all in favor?
I can't.
Really, I understand.
I'm, I'm, I'm not ready for that. Not saying just.
Yes, sir, all right, appreciate it, thank you all.
No.
Is that about the highest of?
Um, yes, but.
Uh, red, dark as fire, move, we ride.